...in session. The opening prayer will be given by Councilwoman Angela Williams. And then would you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings it has to offer us individually and collectively as a city. Father, bless the city of Norfolk, every citizen who resides within its boundaries, and every city employee who works to make our city great. Bless our mayor and each member of our council as we attempt to govern with fairness and guide this city through these challenging times. Bless our manager and every employee who works for the city of Norfolk. Allow us to be tender with the young, compassionate with the aged, sympathetic with the thriving, and tolerant of the weak and of the strong. Father, bless those who are less fortunate and allow them to remember your love and your grace. These and all other blessings we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiro?
Here.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Dr. Whibley and Mr. Riddick.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro? Mrs. Smiegel?
I don't know. Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. Thank you for coming. We're glad to have you here. For your benefit, the process which we will follow for tonight's meeting is there are no public hearings, but we'll move... So, the first thing on the agenda will be the consent agenda. And there are three matters there. The council will probably vote on all three matters in one vote. At the conclusion of the consent agenda, we'll move directly to the regular agenda. There are a number of items there. I think there are 26, and I think we have... We may have one add-on if the council is so agreeable, which would be the appointment of someone to the Recreation Commission that we talked about last week. Mr. Protogiro, Charlotte Williams, who was down here?
I thought she was...
Okay.
Great resume.
And we'll vote on all of those matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. At the conclusion of the formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, you'll be given that opportunity. In order to have your name called, you must first have signed a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began, and several of you have signed up for that. We do have one brief ceremonial matter from the United Way and the Combined Charities Campaign. Geraldine Eady is here, and she'd like to say a few words.
Mayor Framing, council. My name is Carol McCormack. I'm the president of the United Way of Southampton Roads, and with me is Geraldine Eady. She is our campaign coordinator for the cities and schools. And we are here just to say a simple thank you and also to give praise to the city of Norfolk's employees. I'm a proud resident of the city of Norfolk, and one of the things that I think marks our employees is the fact that not only do they work for us and serve us in their work capacity, but they also donate their time, and they also donate their dollars. And United Way, as you know, is just a humanitarian organization. It is for serving local needs. Your employees this year raised $177,000.
Thank you.
And if Sarah Page Fuller would come forward, I don't think it surprises any of us that she served as your campaign coordinator this year. So, Sarah Page, we have a certificate here for you that says, "On behalf of a grateful community, United Way of Southampton Roads would like to recognize your leadership and thank you for helping to create a better life for all."
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. The city also had... You join with the other cities across the region, and you had two of your divisions to rank the highest in terms of increases. One was the Cemetery Division, and the other was the Office of Budget. And I have one last thing to share with you. In the last 10 years, the city of Norfolk employees have raised over $2.2 million.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Thank you. And Sarah, thank you for your effort as well. You're the best.
It was a pleasure.
Appreciate it. Okay. All right. We'll move to the consent agenda. Would any member of the council like to have any portion of the consent agenda considered separately? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Approve consent agenda. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1.
R1 is matter of a public hearing scheduled this day pursuant to acts of the council on March 29, 2011. Under the state law, public notice having been entered local press by the city clerk. Application to the city of Norfolk to amend the general plan of Norfolk, 1992, so as to designate areas appropriate for transit-oriented developments on the future land use map. The general plan and create policy supported TOD-related zoning and to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk so as to create the Transit Oriented Development District.
The council has agreed to continue this matter until Dr. Whibley is back because some of the... Some of this area concerns property or land that's within her ward, and she's had some requests from a couple of... And Mr. Nguyen has too, from a couple of the civic leagues to... For a more complete discussion about this matter. But Mr. James, you've signed up to speak, and we're glad to hear from you. Ellis James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Ellis W. James. I reside here in the city of Norfolk. I would have been happy to waive the opportunity to speak, but I think maybe the issues that I want to raise is... Would be better served speaking tonight rather than waiting. I am very much in favor of what you're attempting to do, but given the very excellent presentation that the council has just received on flooding and tidal and rainfall issues and so on, I'd like to urge the city manager to make sure that we have a good handle on whether or not there are areas that are being considered as a result of this action that you are going to take in the near future, that we make absolutely certain that we don't accidentally put ourselves in the position of allowing development where there are major flooding issues. And I think that's something that concerns a number of people.
Right. It's an excellent point. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, the motion would be to continue for two weeks?
What are our next meeting?
That's two weeks, right?
But I don't know whether we have a work session or...
June 14. June 14.
14th is the next...
Okay. June 14.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2.
An ordinance to revoke the permission to encroach granted to Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority by ordinance number 43,00618, and to grant permission to Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority to encroach into and across the right-of-way Chesterfield Boulevard at 2971 Kemble Loop with a six-foot-wide open-pile pier for a total length of 175 foot extending down to a 15-foot-by-15-foot floating platform at the Channel Ward terminals of the pier with an approximate 4,200 square feet... Square-foot canoe kayakie launch and a six-foot-wide claim shell path that crosses Causey Street for the Grandy Village Community Center. Dispense with the charter requirements for reading ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3.
An ordinance granting permission to Jay Pantel, Trade &amp; S VP on Granby Incorporated, to encroach into the right-of-way of Granby Street at 215 Granby Street, approving the terms and conditions of the encroach agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro? Mrs. Smiegel?
Just real quickly, is this an edible arrangements?
Yeah.
They serve food?
Not really.
Right. Is that the same as the...
It's like the...
The basket?
Instead of flowers, it is fruit that is edible that is delivered primarily.
Yeah, but they don't serve it like you can go...
Right.
Get a meal.
Right. That's why I was asking why they need an outdoor eating area.
Here comes Mr. Duke. They're probably headed that way. Okay.
I wish I was headed that way.
Okay.
Edible arrangements does serve food. You can eat on-site. You can get small fruit cocktails. You can get smoothies, and this is the kind of material that they're looking to be able to offer their customers, a place to sit outside.
Oh. Well, we all got educated, didn't we?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R4.
An ordinance permitting villas by the Sea Condominium Association and Bayside Condominium Association to encroach into city property, 3152 3198 East Oceanview Avenue with a wood walkway and stairs. Dispense with the charter requirements for reading ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Just a couple of things with this I think the rest of council needs to know, and Councilman Nguyen is aware of this. There's two in a row here, R4 and R5. The first one is interesting because there's really no opposition to it because when the Dunes Committee originally met with an agreement on what would be acceptable in this area, the condominium association, that is an acceptable walkway and staircase because it's multiple people using it, and it was to reduce the amount of people that were walking on the dunes. R5 is an individual resident who has requested this as well, and so you're going to hear probably some opposition on this, and I've received a few emails, because it doesn't meet the conditions that the Dunes Committee came up with. My concern with this is that the community in that area still has not been told what the results were of this Dunes Committee that met years... A year ago or so. It was presented at a task force meeting, but there was no public invitation to come to that meeting where it was presented, and I have continued to ask that the city get this information out to the public, that this affects, so that they understand what the acceptable norms are for this, so that when we vote on these, we're comfortable with whatever the agreement was from the citizens that were on that panel. So, this is... I on this.
Well, do we want to wait until we can get in front of them?
For this one, though, this is...
Are you saying we're good with R4? You're saying they're good with R4, but not R5?
In other words, the idea was that many people use the access to the beach and condo. It would come... A walk would be parallel to the bay and then one crossing.
Right. One thing that's... If you read the individual language in these, is you'll see that these are public access ways. So, technically, even though R5, this is on a private property, in a sense, it's... And Bernard, you can correct me if I'm not saying that correctly, but anybody from the public could actually walk over to this and use it as an access way to the beach. But I don't... I'm not sure if the residents who are applying for these, they know this, that they can't put up a sign that says, "No trespassing." They cannot put up a barricade that blocks it with a key or a gate on here, and it... Once again, it's just about educating the people what the agreements were, and I don't think that the city has... I don't think council has actually even adopted an ordinance that accepts what that Dune Committee... I think that's what we came up with, that we did not... Never adopted an ordinance that accepted what the Dunes Committee came up with.
Well, we spent a lot of time... The legal department tweaked the thing to where we thought we had it right. Do we need to take it a step further than that?
I don't know of any issue with it. That you and Councilman Wright were the most involved council people, and the council was fully briefed, and the environmental department within Frank... Within Mr. Duke's planning department are applying it, and in the event that there is an encroachment that is proposed that is not consistent with those developed guidelines, the Department of Development is noting that and recommending against it. And so that here, in the second one, in R5, while it is not multiple use, I don't believe that it is outside of those guidelines. But what Mr. Smiegel says is correct, that the council hasn't adopted that by an ordinance, that it was presented to the council, and the planning department is using it, as I just described.
Should we have adopted it as an ordinance? Or was it a guideline for our planning?
That I think it could have been either way, and perhaps it would help with its dissemination and communication if it was brought back and given the public publication with the council action.
So, are you saying you would say we ought to wait on this?
No, I don't... I didn't get it.
Right. That I don't know of any issues with this.
No, I mean...
And this is the... It's the third one since we had the settlement, so I think that we... Before we get... We're going to get a few more of these, I think, are going to be coming in. We might want to try to address it before we start getting more applications, and most of the ones that are coming before us were grandfathered before they came to us. I believe these were the issues with the walkways after the nor'easter, and that's why they're reapplying for it.
Well, let's finish with R4 here, and then we'll see where we are. Okay?
We're done on four.
No, we haven't finished the vote yet, have you? Did you call...
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5, please.
An ordinance permitting John B. Mayor and Madeline Mayor to encroach into city property at 2534 East Oceanview Avenue with a wood walkway and stairs.
All right. Just a second. Bill Carey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Bill Carey. I live at 2330 Bay Oaks Place in Oceanview, and...
That's in Norfolk, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Norfolk.
Thank you.
We annexed his house.
Councilman Smiegel has taken a lot of what I had to say, but I'm here... First off, I'm here to ask that you do not approve the walkway for Mr. Mayor. I have nothing against the walkway for the condominiums. I was on the committee, and for those of you who don't know, a committee was appointed shortly after the hurricanes. There were a lot of illegal structures, and the hurricane took most of them out. They were unsafe. They were built illegally. So, they had a committee formed, and it was members of all the civic leagues that were on the Chesapeake Bay and other people. I got on there. I was president of the Oceanview Coordinating Committee at the time. There were 12 to 18 people that met regularly for about six months or better. Lee Rosenberg generally hosted it. We had two people from a company in North Carolina that were dunes experts, and they were, you know... They were telling us what was safe with dunes, what was bad for dunes, and all these things, and at a pretty good cost to the city of Norfolk, I'm sure. And anyway, what we did is we started from the beginning. We had lectures on it, and basically we came up with what would be recommended and what wouldn't. It was thought that condominiums and townhomes and everything where a large number of people were going to walk over the dune, it would be better to build a structure because eventually the people would start destroying the dune. As for individuals, the majority, it was voted, "No, don't give them carte blanche to individuals." What happens is the... Occasionally, we have a storm, and it wipes out the face of the dune, and it takes all these little structures that are built and washes them out to sea somewhere, and then the people have an 11-foot, 12-foot drop. It's temporary. There are 15 houses in the two blocks surrounding me. None of us have walkovers out there. We wait. We go to the city walkovers, and eventually, in six, seven months, the dune will start to rebuild, and we can go over the dune, and we don't need structures. But anyway, the committee did come up with good proposals, and it was voted on. It was approved, and then it went into, I don't know where, the ether. And... But based on that plan is why I do not recommend that John Mayor gets approval to do this. I went by his house today. He's excavated the dune so much he can drive a truck down there on a gentle slope, and I don't know where he'd put the walk if he had it. But anyway, I would like to see what happened to that study because a lot of people spent a lot of time, and the city spent money on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Mayor here, by any chance? Why don't we continue the matter until the 14th? Want to end... Because I heard from our attorney that the guidelines as proposed by that committee, that the planning department actually is applying them and apply them in this instance. So, why don't we get some clarification on that? In the meantime, we'll see if Bernard wants to bring back an ordinance. We don't typically... I don't know that we've typically done that. I don't know if there's any reason why we don't, but if there's some confusion about what was actually agreed upon, then we can bring it back in an ordinance.
Mayor, it didn't just go away. We spent a lot of time with planning and legal, trying to tweak it and to come up with what we could legally do and was reasonable, and we just need to get copies of the...
It's a packet about this.
Is the notion that the dune's been destroyed? Is that that they've destroyed the dune?
That's probably separate.
I know that's a separate issue, but is that what I'm hearing?
Is that what?
That the... He's destroyed... The dune has been destroyed?
No, no.
Okay.
During the hurricane, it wipes the face off, so you've got an 11-foot drop.
Okay.
But you said that you could drive a truck through there or something.
Well, no. At John Mayor's property.
Right.
Right.
He was excavated through the dune to make a gentle walkway down to the beach. I don't know why he wants...
How would... How would he... Lee Rosenberg and then...
Stop him.
...stop him today and saw it.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we try to get our hands around it, Mr. Manager?
And let's get... And let's get a... Make available what we ended... Our final document, because it didn't just... It was not just ignored and didn't just go away. I can tell you, it was a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of energy with a lot of people.
Right. When we briefed the homeowners along Bayside, we distributed at Councilman Smiegel's suggestions copies of it that night.
Right.
And I believe Mr. Carey was present, and we just must have failed to make sure that he got a copy of it, but that, yes, that we will see that the council gets copies of it and preparing the ordinance if we want to accept this from the policy.
Do that.
However you recommend.
See that Mr. Carey gets mailed a copy as well.
Is this... Are these properties that are tied to that easement that we just dealt with?
That these are on East Oceanview Avenue, so these are not Bayside.
So...
No. No, no.
No, no. That's not...
He wanted to...
That's a big bite.
No, it is.
Okay. All right. The motion...
He's ready to spring on it.
That the property addresses on East Oceanview Avenue, but the encroachments will go across the Bayside Avenue, which is Paper Street that runs between.
Okay. Is the 14th a good time to come back?
Yes.
Can you do it in two weeks?
Yes.
All right. Three weeks, rather. Okay. Motion is to continue to the 14th of June.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6.
An ordinance permitting Kate's Corner LLC, the owner of the property located at 320 East 41st Street, to encroach into the city right-of-way at 41st Street with a driveway and a pier. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7.
An ordinance to amend in Real Estate Section 25-654 so as to add 16 stop signs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiegel?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
Accepting $174,943.57 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services for the 4-for-life aid to locality program, and appropriating unauthorized expenditure of $174,943.57 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services for the 4-for-life aid to locality program to be used for medical training purposes and to purchase emergency medical equipment.
Just a second. Just a second. Dan Montague?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Jones. My name is Dan Montague. I live at 4605 Creek Street here in the city of Norfolk. So, happy you guys are going to get $175,000 from the state to help you with your health program. Now, I want you guys, the city, to help Dan Montague with his health program, and that is, in the coming months, we're going to have music down at the Oceanview Park and also here at Town Point Park. And the thing about it is, I get down there early, and I get me a good place to sit, and I'm sitting there enjoying the music, and I get up and dance to it every so often. But the thing about it is, it seems like every time I do this, some dummy about four or five seats over from me will light up a cigarette on the windward side, and I got to breathe secondhand smoke. Now, if I can quit smoking cold turkey, doing three packs a day, and I didn't have any problems doing it, that was before the patch and everything, I hadn't had a cigarette in 40 years, okay? And the thing is, why should I have to suck down somebody else's smoke so I can listen to some good beach music? New York City passed such an ordinance. Now, why can't Norfolk follow in New York City's footsteps? New York City is way ahead of us on a lot of issues. And so anyway, like I say, I'm getting sick and tired of having to breathe other people's smoke. And if people had seen my late wife, the last two years of her life, trying to suck on an oxygen tank, you know, because she smoked too late in her life, you know? Anyway, I was 30 when I quit. And anyway, she was 46 when she quit, see? But this is what I'm saying. We don't need cigarette smoke around there for everybody that doesn't smoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement, read, ordinate and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, okay. You know, we... Maybe we ought to take a look at what, Mr. Attorney, what our ability is to regulate. I know, for instance, like at Harbor Park, we can ban it. We can... I know we have plenty of authority on indoor facilities. Outdoors?
Yes. Given our Dillon Rule, we've got to go over that legislation that impacted us in the restaurants. We'll give you some information...
Okay.
About your discretion for parks.
Okay, thank you. Aye. Okay, R9, please.
A resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to accept traffic improvement projects the city of Norfolk and the FY 2012 Revenue Sharing Program. Adopt resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R10.
A resolution supporting the proposed roadway improvement project for the replacement of the Jamestown Crescent culvert over Kali Bay between Bowling Avenue and Magnolia Avenue and associated improvements, requesting funding for such project in the amount of $375,000 through the FY 2012 Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program and authorizing the execution of the project administration agreements. Adopt resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro? Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R11.
A resolution supporting the proposed traffic improvement project for a traffic signal at the intersection of Second Street, Brownminton Avenue, requesting funding for the such project in the amount of $250,000 through the FY 2012 Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program and authorizing the execution of the project administration agreements. Adopt resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R12.
A resolution supporting the proposed roadway improvement project for the replacement of the Campbell Terrace culvert over Ohio Creek and associated drainage and pathway improvements, requesting funding for such project in the amount of $250,000 through the FY 2012 Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program, authorizing the execution of the project administration agreements. Adopt resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R13.
An ordinance approving the acceptance of a donation of $18,828.68 from Old Dominion University for funding of the Elizabeth River Wetlands Restoration and Waterfront Access Project under the terms and conditions of the AN agreement between the city, Old Dominion University, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Norfolk District regarding the wetlands restoration project.
Ellis James, please. This may be the most expensive public works project ever undertaken in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager Jones. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside here in the city of Norfolk at 2021 Kenlake Place. I would like to simply enter for the record support for this project. I could be cute about it and say, but I sure hope the city manager has somebody who's going to monitor these phones... These funds that we're sending to the feds in view of how we've been treated by some of the federal agencies. But it is an excellent project, and it certainly deserves support. And I do hope that we'll see more favorable expressions of support for Norfolk's needs, especially vis-à-vis the flooding issues and so on, from the Corps. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, read, ordinate and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R14.
An ordinance authorizing expenditure of up to $600,000 from FY 10 Capital Improvement Project Budget Funds herefore appropriated for the improvement of certain neighborhood commercial areas. Dispense with the charter requirement, read, ordinate and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mrs. Smigle?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.